All right, we're going to call to order the West Sacramento City Council and the Redevelopment Successor Agency and Financing Authority for the May 18, 2016 meeting. We're going to begin tonight, as we do each week, with a pledge, so we'd like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge, which tonight's going to be led by Ms. Charlene Hamilton.
The citizens who defy the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, honor the nation under God and the peaceful, with liberty and justice for all.
The council did meet in closed session this evening to confer with our real property negotiator regarding the parcel number that's listed in our closed session agenda, and no action was taken. Breaks into item 1A, which is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda within the jurisdiction of the city council. This is designated on our agenda, this is an opportunity for public testimony and comment, but the council is prohibited by state law from taking action on any items that are brought forward under item 1A. We do ask anyone who is interested to address the council on this or any other item this evening, to please fill out one of the yellow cards near the front door and turn it into the city clerk. I'm scanning the audience, I'm going to fast-forward through my normal instructions, but we do ask that all comments be limited to no more than three minutes, and the flip chart shows what item we're currently considering. So we have no requests to speak under item 1A, so we're going to proceed directly then to item 1B, which is council communications, or any reports or communications this evening. Mr. Ledesma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of these brief items. First, on, you came faster than I was ready, sir. On May 9, I have to go back to remember all the meetings we had. We had a meeting of the Yellow County Transportation District, and during that meeting, we did a few things, but most importantly, we went ahead and approved fare increases for fixed route and paratransit fare increases, I think I mentioned that at the last meeting, and those fares were approved. We moved those forward. We also got some updates on transportation studies for woodland, and we also got some nice feedback from the staff regarding updates to our routes in West Sacramento. I know they've been working very closely with the city staff here, and so we have some good direction going forward on route changes, and getting feedback from the public, and making a few amendments from our proposed routes, but I think we're looking good going forward. I did want to bring up that in, as many of you are aware, the big item was around the budget, though, and that it's related to our bus transit initiative, and that the budget did call for an increase to our funding towards the Transit District. I want to thank staff again for being very proactive on that front. I think it was around the neighborhood 160,000, I don't want to say it was, increase, but staff looked at our current schedules, asked for ways to mitigate that, to kind of compensate for it, so we may have some additional changes in service, slight ones, I think we're proposing. I think staff was taking that at, YCTD was amenable to that, trying to find a way so not to have those budget impacts hit us directly. So again, I want to thank our city staff for being so proactive with YCTD staff, but again, it just kind of echoes the fact that the services for the bus continue, costs continue to go up, ridership has come down, and our real initiative here is to try to, we're going to be paying for that transit one way or the other, and I think that's one of the messages we learned, talked to the bus riders in West Sacramento about, is that we need to find ways to get more people on the bus. That's been our initiative all along, how do we increase ridership, make them more effective? So again, it just was a good way for us to remember that message as we talked to YCTD. So again, thanks to city staff for facilitating that. In addition, this past week, on Monday, the, what was it, the 16th, I'm just losing track of time, we had a meeting of the Yellow Habitat Conservancy, and a few updates, budgets, again, were at the top of the list. I have been appointed to the newly-created Finance Committee with myself and Board Member Ferrex from Davis, as we look to begin work. The plan continues, we are looking to finalize, get permits, all fingers crossed, in November of 2017, believe it or not, permits will be here, we're getting ready for the EIR process. So all things are going pretty well, minus any staffing changes at the agencies that are reviewing that. But the big impetus now for us as organizational goals and budget goals is to prepare for a full-time agency to implement it, which, in light of the history of this JPA, as well as our experience with JPAs, I think Board Member Ferrex and I both hold the same view that we want to make sure we are cautious in how we start to think about staffing that, but more so making sure we leverage all the available assets in Yellow County. I know our Executive Director, Petra Marshand, has been meeting with the city managers, who have been really kind of looking and shaping that direction, and making sure we leverage existing resources in the county, and so we're committed to doing that, and we'll be starting working that here in the summer, start to pull together that plan, looking for additional revenues to augment it, so that it's not so dependent on our city going forward, and as well as not pulling additional resources, that can see it go out of control, as we've seen this very agency do in the past. So again, those are two, I think, pretty important meetings, and how they relate back to us, and how we interact with these two agencies, but again, both, I must say, the JPA, the Yellow Conservancy is sounding really good, I can't wait till we can get to getting these permits, that'd be a big win for the county, I think, and for our city, for making it happen to come back. So there was one other item, I want to make sure I give staff a heads-up on, and we asked about it, which was, we looked at possibly soliciting bids to update the interim Swans and Hawks mitigation fund. I actually questioned whether we need to do that, since the plan will go into effect in just over 17 months, is it worth the money to spend to kind of update it, what's the risk between getting implemented for one year? So I would ask staff if they can follow up with Petra, I think she was going to get some additional research around that. So that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kristoff.
Very briefly, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, last Wednesday, we, the Sacregional met, and the main discussion was the Echo Water Project, of course, which is that major undertaking that we are undertaking, and the only thing that was of any interest was, there were some minor budget issues that were discussed, and other than that, there's really nothing back to, report back to.
All right, that's all the, I do want to acknowledge the staff and thank members of the council for participating in the Global Food Hub regional conversation that we had here with the U.S. Trade Representative's Office. I got a note from them today, and I was also on the, today the International Trade Commission released its review of the Trans-Pacific Partnership, so I was on the phone with the U.S. Trade Representative himself, Ambassador Forman, and he, in his remarks about the TTP, specifically called out that event and the city, in part because the ITC's review of the Trans-Pacific Partnership highlighted that the most significant winning sector in the whole TPP was food and agriculture, and he was always pointing to West Sacramento and this region as a place where that all comes together, so very positive, so thanks for being a part of that. All right, there's no other communications. Council appointments submitted to the council, a set of five appointments, three to the Parks Recreation and Intergenerational Services Commission, Nancy Levy, Michael Folk, a youth member, and Aruj Ahmad as an alternate, for the Economic Development and Housing Commission to transfer Mark Campbell, who's currently the alternate commissioner, to be a regular member of the commission, that will leave an alternate position available still on that commission, and then for the Sacramento-Yoala Port District Commission to reappoint Councilmember Johannesen. So, Mayor, if you can send it in.
I'll move your recommendation.
All right, so moved and seconded. Any discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, hearing done, that motion carries, the appointments are approved, thank you. That brings us to the consent agenda, items 2 through 10, are there any items in consent to remove, or any item for separate question or comment?
I'll move consent.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further question or debates? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, hearing done, motion carries. Brings us to item 11, which is public hearing and consideration of Resolution 15, I'm sorry, 16-35, confirming the diagram and assessment, and ordering improvements for maintenance to be made for the landscaping and lighting district number one. Blumberg.
As we prepare for the next year's tax roll, and this, and this report deals with the tax year 2016, 2017, we have annual proceedings for our assessment districts that require us to come have the council approve the budget and the amount of the assessments, and then there's also a public hearing requirement. So with that said, you know, this item deals with approval of Resolution 1635, and before you consider approval of the resolution, we would ask that you have a public hearing on the item.
Are there questions for Paul at this time? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing, and we don't have any requests to speak, but it is a legal public hearing. Does anyone wish to address the council on item 11? Seeing none, we're going to close the public hearing and return to the council for any further question, comment, or for a motion.
I'll move the recommended action, please.
Seconded, moved and seconded, seeing no further discussion or debate, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, hearing done, that motion carries. Item 12 is public hearing and consideration of Resolution 16-36, confirming the diagram and assessment, and ordering improvements for the storm drain maintenance district number one, Rayleigh's Landing. Mr. Blumberg.
Yeah, I won't repeat myself, this item deals with our Storm Brain District, the one in Rayleigh's Landing, or the Washington neighborhood, as it's now referred, and again, there's also a public hearing item prior to consideration of Resolution 1636.
I need to open the public hearing first. So there's no questions for Mr. Blumberg, and we're in the public hearing, anyone who should address the council on item 12? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Mr. Johannesen now has moved, is there a second? Moved and seconded, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, hearing done, that motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Blumberg, now go home and refinance some things for us. Okay, item 13 is presentation and discussion of proposed midterm adjustments to the city's adopted two-year budget, ending June 30, 2017. Mr. Wright?
If I could introduce our Assistant City Manager, Phil Wright, and it is with us, the budget looks pretty simple, as you see the outline, but it's really extraordinary effort by the department heads, and Phil and his team, the department heads are all here today. Out of the big picture here, is we're talking about three additional positions, two in police to help them deal with their increased community engagement, as well as the parking effort, and then one in fire that helps them with primarily succession planning. There's two additional positions in Public Works Engineering, but those are going to be covered by the projects, we have a fair amount of work to be done there. So I just want to compliment the staff for being very, very conservative on this. This puts our total positions at 300, about 365, far below where we were in our high-watermark of 2,009 with 424. So, you know, we've gotten a clear direction from you to be conservative, be very constrained, and the department heads have done that. We've had a lot of requests for positions, but we're going very, very slowly at this, and I want to just thank Phil and the leadership of all the department heads in working and getting this teed up.
Thank you, Marty. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I would also just also like to give my thanks to the department heads. This process really starts with the council retreat, get direction from the council at the end of January and February, and for the next three months, the department heads meet every Wednesday, and as Marty said, we beat each other up and work our way down to what is being presented today in a workshop format, to get some further direction, and hopefully come back in a couple weeks and get the budget adopted. We have a PowerPoint, we'll just go through it very quickly. So again, you've seen this before, it really hasn't changed since the April meeting, we're finishing the year, about 731 total for this fiscal year, and you'll see why we may need some of that money when we look at some of the other funds, and a lot of that is because of savings, just do some vacant positions. So operationally, we're about 85,000 in the black, so very close to budget. Things are getting a little better next year, it's, as you know, it's on a $45 million budget, $731,000 is not a huge amount of excess money, but we are going to have some additional money, it looks like, going into the next year. So if you look at the requests, we've done this first by personnel and then by O&amp;M, so again, looking at the requests in the Police Department, there's, and you'll see the same in the Fire Department, there's an upgrade of a position from financial analyst to an administrative analyst, really a need for higher-level work in both of those departments to manage not just the budget, but some of the other issues that need to be handled administratively. There's a senior clerk for parking, as you know, we've begun a new parking program, and while Sacramento is doing a lot of the enforcement, we're doing a lot of the paperwork, and so there's a request for a clerk there. A captain to be brought in in January, our deputy police chief is anticipating a retirement, and we want some crossover time for some training and succession planning. I want to be very clear with the council that this is a reorganization that'll come to you next year, when the deputy chief retires, that the request will be for an additional captain, so there will be two captains, a chief and two captains, and no deputy chief, but at this time, we're just asking for the one chief. And then, again, for a little more supervision, the chief is requesting that one officer be made a sergeant, this will not increase numbers, it's just adding of a sergeant and one less patrol officer for supervision on the streets. In the Police Department, I'm sorry, in the Fire Department, two things, one is, one of the challenges we have in the Fire Department is when our division chief shows up at any event with any of our co-agencies, there's always a deputy chief, and they always assert that they are higher in authority, and we don't think that's the case, and so this is not a money item, just to make an adjustment, and then the chief is requesting a second division chief, really this is for operational purposes, so that they, that we have more operational supervision at the highest level, and we're asking that that, as you'll see later, come from Measure K, where we have two police officers and sergeant, and we just have two firefighters, so we're trying to parallel those, and there is money in there. Again, I talked about the financial need for the financial specialist to become an admin analyst. Parks and Rec are simply asking for some extra help, which the council's already approved, pay minimum wage, and that obviously means that we're spending a little more money, so we need an extra supplement to pay the minimum wage for our extra help employees. The city manager's office asking for a little extra help for the communication, we're in a transition period, obviously, with arts retirement and a lot of the new things that Paul does, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of work, particularly when we're doing events, and we need some extra help money to sort of do that the way we want to do them. In the Admin Services Department, we're asking to upgrade the Human Resource Manager to be the same level as the other managers, there's an anticipated retirement, and we'll actually have a savings when that occurs this year, because I'm going to have the HR person take over some additional duties, in a, again, a reorganization. And in the Community Development Department, we've simply, there was the move of the Flood Division, and obviously, as you know, code enforcement came over from police, our director is doing a lot of, a lot more work in code enforcement and flood than we had budgeted, and so we're reallocating some money to properly account for her time. There's also the secretary who's been doing pretty much code enforcement work, and so it's appropriate that she be billed to the code enforcement. So it's 417,000 in personnel adjustments. On the O&amp;M side, we're talking, you know, very, very minimal O&amp;M, we've had a lot more requests than this, as the city manager indicated, and we really had to pare it down, because we have $700,000, so if we spent 400 personnel, we can only spend 300 here. So we pared it down to the scholarship program that the council approved at the last meeting, the direction the council gave to find a long-term solution. If we find a long-term solution, we don't need to use this money, we'll return it to the general fund, and staff is working on that. Administrative services, we have Gatsby 68, Gatsby 75, these new requirements that are causing our auditors to charge us more, that we don't have in the budget, and I will comment that we cut a lot of things to try to not ask for any money here, but there's just some stuff that we can't, and so that's a little $10,000 fee, and then, believe it or not, somehow our postage has been completely out of whack, we seem to be sending a lot more things in the mail, and so our postage, we need a little bit of money just to balance our budget there. And then with the Police Department, we have, the car cameras are about in need for replacement, and we will do a lease, and so that 120,000 will be an ongoing commitment, but that's the annual commitment to the lease, and to disaster recovery, and then there is 15,000, which I think is on, the council just approved, on the consent agenda, which is the city manager being able to vote in favor, if the assessment passes, we're going to have an additional cost, because some of that property is ours, that's 15,000. So that takes us to 717, keeping the budget balanced very conservatively, as the city manager indicated, the requests were substantially more than this, thanks to the department heads' collaboration and willingness to really work together, we pared it down to maintain a balanced budget. Moving on to two other items, the council, as mentioned, at their annual strategic planning session, provides us with guidance, and as the council remembers in this budget, we put money into a fund to have money available to be able to deal with these strategic plan initiatives the council wants us to work on. So we're asking, there's 432,000 that has not been committed, we're asking to use 285,000 of that, 45,000 for the 21st Century Policing, 120,000 for the public and open space, 70,000 for the education, 50,000 for transportation, and certainly if you have any detailed questions, I can answer, but we tried to be very careful and make sure that we only asked to use money that was directly connected to those items that the council had asked us to work on. One-time money, we have some one-time money, as the council knows, we're very careful in how we use it, that's what, sort of last minutes, but we use it for one-time items, things that really aren't going to be ongoing, and so we had approved 100,000 for body cameras, the police chief and his department are in the process of looking through the last vendors on which one they want to use, and the prices are all about 150,000, so we need about 50,000 more to be able to actually do it, we have 100,000 already in the budget, so we're asking for 50,000. We had 100,000 from one-time money last year. And then the zoning ordinance modernization, we're asking for 200,000 in one-time money to be able to work on that project. Couple other items, the Community Investment Fund, Fund 106, which we, is run by the Economic Development Department, we're simply asking for 100,000 from 106 for the broadband master plan. Measure K, I talked to you earlier, we're asking for 172, I will point out that we, you will get a Measure K scorecard on June 1, but the good thing is Measure K money is going up, and we actually have about 300,000 of unallocated Measure K money, so we have more than 172,000 that we can use for this position, we're not spending at all here. And then the Road Fund has some very, very minor, we have a couple pieces of equipment that are very old that we need to replace, and then some debt service money that we didn't have in the budget. Before we go on to Public Works Engineering, any questions on the general fund that anyone would like to ask at this time? Okay, I will go into Public Works Engineering. Public Works Engineering has done a really good job of making some adjustments, and as you can see, we're now projecting a positive, and when it's only 598, that's exactly actually what we should have, because this is not supposed to be a money-making department, we're supposed to charge what it costs us to provide the services, so that's pretty good. 598, we're projecting 6,000, so I don't know where he's hoarding that other $6,000, but you know, we'll figure out where to go with it. You can see the negative number, staff is not very concerned, as I indicated last time, that's based on some projected retirements and some payoffs, they may or may not happen, it may not be all of them, there probably will be savings in, you know, positions that aren't filled right away, they don't take a couple months to fill, and maybe some O&amp;M that's saving, we think we'll be fine next year on this one. If we have to come back with an adjustment near the end of next year, we will, but we don't anticipate it. So this fund seems to be under control, as the city manager indicated, there's two positions here, an assistant engineer and engineering tech. There's plenty of work, as I think the council's aware, that has been assigned to the Public Works Department, if they bill 72%, which is what they're, all they try to bill, that will pay for their wages and their benefits 100%, and Dennyx assures me that he'll have more than 72% of their time billed, and I think that's probably the case, given the list of projects we have. The Community Development, as we've talked about, has had some challenges, just, it's a difficult department, first of all, to budget, because you're anticipating when things are going to get, you know, come in and get built, and sometimes they get delayed, and we had a number of major projects that have been delayed. The adjustments that we have asked the council to make will take the 730,000 negative down to 460, so we think that will help, and then activity is definitely picking up, we have two or three projects that we think may come in before July 1, so by June 1, when we ask the council to adopt the budget, we hope that 460 number will be less, but that would be, you know, the 730 that we have in the general fund, however far we get that down, we will have to use that money to balance the community development budget. But again, we think it'll be less than 460 by the time we get to the end of the year, and as you can see, with the adjustments that we've made, the projections for 1617 are slightly in the positive. I think it's important to note and give Charlene some credit, that the reorganization of the, of the building, am I saying it right, building, right? Make sure, the building division actually saved us 130,000 if we had been doing it the way we had done it in the past, so that was a, that was a good reorganization for us from a financial standpoint. So just concluding on the budget presentation, there's, the issues that we have to be, I think, cognizant of is, as we talked about last meeting, the long-term funding for early search learning, we've solved the short-term problem, we got to solve the long-term problem, we don't have a source of funding for that as we sit here tonight. The public and open space, we're simply solving the short-term problem with 120,000 we're asking for, that will allow us to get through the next year with our enforcement and our cleanup, but we need a long-term funding source to be able to really sustain that effort for a long period of time. Road maintenance, very similar, the fund continues to be balanced, doing, you know, potholes and minor repairs, but as we have to do major projects, there's not a source of money for the significant projects we have to do. Finally, we cannot take our eye off the ball on PERS, I think it's very fair to say that PERS rates are going to go up again because of the recent changes that are in PERS, we don't know if they'll wait till after the five years of increases that they hit us with two years ago, or whether they'll, will get hit before that. Staff has some ideas of how to resolve some of these issues, or hinge against them, and we'll bring those back in July, but we have to be aware that PERS costs don't tend to go down, and retiree health costs, while we've capped all of those, and we've solved our long-term problem, most of our retirees are not at the cap, and as healthcare goes up, our ARC, our annual required contribution, will continue to go up. And retiree health costs, while we've capped all of those, we've solved our long-term problem, most of our retirees are not at the cap and as healthcare goes up, our ARC, our Annual Required Contribution, will continue to go up for a while. We're digging away at it, but it's still a long-term liability and as I think the council's aware, our unfunded pension liability shows on our CAFER this year. So if you look at the bottom line on our CAFER, so our net worth, as it were, is less than it was because now the pension liability shows on the CAFER. Two years from now, the retiree health will show on the CAFER, it won't be a footnote anymore. And there will be cities that will be in the red at that point. We will not be. We will still be fine, we'll still have a significant net worth, so to speak, but it will be a reduction because it will show that here's your liability for retirement and here's your liability for retiree health and it comes out of your, you know, your assets.
Right.
And then, as you know, there's still a lot of property tax appeals out there that, you know, that we don't know how they're going to resolve and we still have cities that think sharing agreements are good ideas and, you know, so we have to keep our eye on making sure we take care of our businesses that are here in town and keep them here and that's what I have for the budget.
All right, Mr. Johansson.
Yeah, thanks a lot, Phil. It was nice and concise. The, just the comment that you had on the PERS and the retiree health having to show up as a part of the net worth. Now, in our ability to finance and our bond ratings, I would imagine the, those are, the footnotes have been considered.
I would, if they do their job thoroughly, I would say yes. I mean, I suppose, there are probably people who hope they don't find those in the footnotes, but I think that they probably do.
So, but now they definitely will be, with all seriousness.
Now, they're right there.
Right, okay. So the only question I have, it looks like most of these adjustments relate to the priorities that we've talked about and necessary improvements. The one is this broadband master plan. So my only question on that is, is this just going to be more money for planning? Because we already have a strategy, I mean, not a strategy, but a broadband availability mapping that Yolo County did last year or the year before, I think. So we, I think we need to move into kind of purchasing things at some point and I'm not sure what this plan is about, you know, if it's, if there's, you know, there's maybe other ways to approach this. Like if you're going to approach a certain section of the city, we know there's a deficit in certain areas of the city, you're going to create a pilot project in that way and you potentially could have a vendor that could help with a lot of this planning and not have to spend this money. So that's my only concern. I don't really know enough about this issue, at least from the staff level, but just another plan with no product.
I'm going to let Charlene Hamilton, because this is her project, I'll let her answer that question.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yeah, this is not just another planning document. What this is, is taking what we did at the county level and drilling it down to on the ground here in the city. The majority of this money will be spent on surveying where our gaps are in infrastructure and service and then also taking that, analyzing it and figuring out what barriers do we have that we can remove as a city? And then how can we partner with our local providers and also bring new providers in? So this is really an implementation document that we hope to bring back to you later this year and really set the stage. And we've got WAVE actively waiting to partner in part of this and we're confident that other providers are going to come forth very soon. So the city, we actually have found out, just in some of the pre-work we've done, that we have some very valuable assets in the city. And the key is, is how do we connect them all? So it's not just another planning document, but there will be a little bit of planning to it, but it will lead to significant implementation.
All right, that's fair enough. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Lidesma. Mr. Kristof.
Yeah, Phil.
Mr. Johansson, Mr. Kristof.
Going back to PERS.
Yes.
Is PERS going to change their projected earnings?
Yes.
The interest rate? They are.
Yeah, I, it's, they've already talked about the fact that they're changing their investment strategy. When you change your investment strategy, the next thing that follows is that your anticipated returns have to, have to be reduced because you can't have a more conservative investment strategy and think you're going to get the same return on your money. So I, when I say it, yes, I mean, obviously I don't have a crystal ball that knows it. I just have, I'm just educated enough to know that when you change your, when you change your strategy for investments and you are more conservative, you're going to change your returns. It's the natural follow-up to that.
So what you're saying is if PERS has a 7.5 interest rate, rate of return, if it goes to, if they change that to six or to five or whatever it is, that going to affect us?
Absolutely. They, there's X amount of money they need and if they're getting less money anticipated in their returns, they're going to look to the other side of the equation and they're going to say that we need more money from our, from our members.
Okay.
And now, the question simply is going to be, PERS has been, I will say, fairly good recently in trying to spread it over a period of time. They know we have the, the changes that they implemented two years ago, they spread over five years. So the hope, and this is what we will be lobbying for, I will go to PERS and lobby for this, which is that they wait until 2021, when the five-year, the last five-year impact ends and put this, you know, for the next five years rather than put it on top of what they've already hit us with. But there are some ways that I think we can hedge against that. I've got something I will bring to the council in July, a program to put some money away to maybe hedge against that. Also to help us with our ratings because it's a program where you're basically putting some money away, committed to your pension and you can either use it to reduce, sorry, to increase the percent that you're funded or if PERS rates go up, you can use it to hedge against those increased rates. But I, I think it's, if I were a betting man, which I'm not, I would definitely bet on PERS rates going up.
Okay. Mr. Lidesma?
Thank you. Thanks, Phil, for the, for the presentation and agree with the city manager. This is good news and it's good, it's, the department has done a great job of managing, as we've talked about for the last few years. And it's, again, we continually see the trajectory of our revenues continue to climb back and, but we're maintaining the expense level, so that's, that's terrific and more so in the way you present it and it's very concise, very to the point about where we're making kind of strategic moves and investments in the city and I appreciate that. I agree with all of them. I appreciate Mr. Johansson's comment. I was kind of zeroing in on the Fund 106, but mainly because I know we do the scorecard on the other funds and they're coming our way, so I'll always keep an eye on that one to make sure it's true. So I would agree with Mr. Johansson's assessment that we want to make sure, as we use those funds that they are actually into strengthening the infrastructure and the, and the things we need and not just into a planning document, although those are sometimes necessary too. They actually got to turn into something at some point, so thanks, Mr. Johansson, for bringing that up. The only other question is around, sort of, it's just your thought on the, the last few cycles we've gone through, there's always the cloud over our head, not the cloud, but certainly the property tax assessments and at least the appeals that are hanging out there. I mean, you don't, can you give me kind of a, expand upon that, what, what kind of feedback we're getting and are we going to see something all at once? Because I can sense values are going the opposite way than when they were a few years ago when these have been hanging out there for a while. Are they being mitigated by the increase in valuations that they may not impact us as much as we thought?
Well, you know, it's always hard on these because if you, when we meet with the county and you look at the appeals and what people have asked for, you know, we'd be, would be, you know, I mean, we would have serious problems if they won all of the appeals. I mean, the requests are substantial appeals and they almost always, 98% of sort of like court cases, you know, set and they settle for, you know, a 2% decrease or something and they, they move on to the next year. We, so I don't actually anticipate there's going to be a problem, but you know, as a finance director, till the money's in the bank, you don't count it. When you've got appeals, you have to keep your eye on those.
Right.
Because one of those going the wrong way can have a significant impact. As you can see, if the council gives us direction to move forward with the proposals we have tonight, we have 770,000 in the, or 50,000 in the plus and we're spending 717. It leaves us $29,000. We can't really get hit with a $500,000 property tax appeal without being in the red. I don't, you know, I don't, I don't think that, I'm not overly worried about it, I just keep my eye on that ball all the time. We meet with the county twice a year, we go over all the appeals with them, we talk with them, we work with them, we support them and, you know, we're very, we're aware of what they all are and we think we're fine, but we do have some that, you know, go back five years and are, and are pushing very hard for reductions, so we're having to support the county. The county has to carry the ball with us.
Right.
I've told Supervisor Vega, on more than one occasion, if you're going to cut people in the county, don't cut the people that do this because they're desperate. We need them to, you know, get the money that we need to run our city.
Right. No, I appreciate your feedback and that you are talking to them on a regular basis, so isn't, we're not keeping our eye off that ball a little bit where they are, so thank you.
Mayor Protem Sandin?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I want to commend you and also the management team for the restraint and prudence and listening to our direction. That came through loud and clear in, in this update and the adjustments. I am imagining that this was all being put to bed and finalized so that we could receive it and would go public on Friday. And on Thursday night, I went to a very compelling visionary speech and presentation given by our mayor and so my question is, is, is would we have, I know that this has to happen, I mean, there's time limit, we need to hear this and move forward, but is there space in this if we were, for example, after some deliberation here, to put forward, let's say, a ballot measure or something, is there enough capacity to do that or to work on a partnership? Let's say on a college promise or to, do we, do we still have capacity to do some visionary things?
Sure, I mean, I.
That come after this point?
I think, I will probably let the mayor really speak to that, but the items I identified at the end happened to be very consistent with the things that the mayor identified in his speech. And so we, those are areas that we don't have money for right now, but certainly a sales tax measure would, would be very helpful in those areas, no doubt about it. Because we really do, you know, we have a short-term fix to the early learning and we have a short-term fix to the open space and enforcement and we have a, we've got enough money to continue to fill potholes, but that's where we are right now. So without something, we wouldn't have been able to solve the problems that the area had. I think that's a fair statement.
I was going to pick on that as well, but let me, let me first just highlight one other area in here and it's somewhat related because it's, and it's the fire captain in Measure K piece. That's got to go. That's not the right fund source for a fire captain. So Measure, when Measure K was adopted, the measure we put before the voters in Measure J was for, excuse me, for repairing amendments of city streets, new parks and community facilities, library services, after-school programs, childcare and senior facilities, expanded police and fire protection and reductions in total bills and new property tax assessments. Those were the specific items and no, expanded and, you know, each one it was to do, to do better and to do more, with the underlying philosophy being that the purpose of, one of the fundamental concepts behind Measure J and K was, we have resources because of new development to be able to do these really cool parks and trails and bike lanes and what have you, principally in Southport, but we want to stay one city and the whole, we want to make investments in the entire city and so Measure J and K are, were intended to, to be able to accomplish that, to provide these kinds of community enhancements everywhere, but beyond our base budget. And so the, the transition of a, of a core management position to Measure K, to me, runs exactly in the opposite of that and particularly given the conversation that Mayor Protem just, Sandin just started and I also want to pick up on, the integrity of how, of our fidelity to that commitment and to that philosophy around Measure J and K is really important. Even, so as, as the amount of Measure K grows over time and it's for additional things, it needs, at least from my perspective, needs to be in, still in that same frame that it is for, it is for the purpose of sharing amenities and improvements across the city. So in areas that have no new development, Brighton, Broderick, state streets, you know, they're never, we're never going to be building five-story or 12-story towers in those neighborhoods and they're not going to be new subdivisions. So if they're going to have kind of community enhancements, it's got to be from this kind of a, this kind of a fund for that to occur. It seems, I mean, looking at the numbers, it's, there are plenty of things that fit in the Measure K envelope that are not being proposed for Measure K. So I don't, to me, it's not a question of not doing the, I mean, I'm not proposing we don't have a fire captain, far from it, but just that that's not the right, that's not the right transfer to happen. All right, so you could, you could imagine, given Measure K's focus on preschool, for example, the, the early learning scholarships, that being a portion of Measure K as an example. You might imagine the public transportation piece. Public transportation was the first time we invested in public transportation, not, not state law requirements, was through Measure J and K. So you might envision that being a potential possibility. The public and open space cleanup enforcement piece, to the extent that it's related to the new, the new trails and that sort of thing. So I, I don't want to micro do the budget here, but simply to suggest there are other, I think there are other alternatives that are principally accounting changes that would allow you to accomplish what you're trying to do in terms of the overall set of priorities, which I completely share and agree with and, and concur with my colleagues about, you know, the quality of the work that's been done here without, while maintaining the full integrity of what Measure J and K were all about. So I think that's totally.
I was going to have the chief come up, but I think you've given, oops.
You've given me plenty of ways to solve them without having to have.
Yeah, that added up to more than this.
Yeah, yeah.
The stuff I suggested added up to more.
You did, so we'll make, we'll make that adjustment.
So I think, I think it's possible, but I just think that's, it's really important that we not, that we not move core management into Measure J and K or into Measure G either, that, you know, these are commitments that we've made to the public and we made them in a general, in a general purpose way with the expectation that we would hold ourselves accountable and we have done that. I mean, you know, we, we, all five of us, you know, if, if any of us try to, you know, stray a little bit, all five of us say, hey, wait a second. We, what we said to the public in our, both in spirit and in letter, that was that we were going to do this and so, so I'd appreciate doing that. But I certainly concur with, with Mayor Protem Sandin and if we're going to solve those longer-term issues, we do need to, to look at some other alternatives and I think it is the right time for us to, for the council to consider a sales tax change partly because the county is considering it in our absence at a potentially higher rate than, if we were to do a quarter cent and the county's contemplating a half cent, our residents and business might prefer our, an approach that worked better for us. But also with the state change that is certain to happen at the end of this year with the, with the Prop 30 walkback, our expiration of that, of that quarter cent sales tax, the accounting issues and just the overall sales tax burden on businesses and customers would not be felt if we were to essentially swap out the state quarter cent for a city quarter cent. And that moment won't be here if the, if the state's sales tax expires at the end of the year and then, and then for some reason we come back in two years and say, hey, we really, we really do want to fix roads long-term, we really do want to take care of early learning. The window for us to be able to do that in a way that would be the least disruptive would have, would have passed, especially if the county were to put a half-cent sales tax on the ballot this year and start to eat away at that capacity. So I think it's, personally, I think we should be asking you to come back with a, with an item for us to consider on a, on a, on a sales tax measure for, potentially for the fall, for us to be able to raise those issues and to give us the latest on how that would position us relative to, you know, our competing cities and Sacramento and Davis and Woodland. You know, the kinds of issues that we've always cared about in terms of, in terms of our ability to continue to be strong in economic development lines, but I think for the, for the long-term vulnerabilities that you mentioned and then for some of the, the key strategic initiatives that we know we need to be doing, we've already started them. It's, I mean, several of these requests in here are, are the first ante on some of this work, but they're not enough. I mean, they're not, they're not enough to, to fix some of our major issues around homelessness or public and open space or around workforce development or some of these, the elements that are in the strategic plan are at the beginning and they're getting us a start, but we're, but we need the ability to go further. So I would propose that we, that we do direct you to do that at the, at the, at the next session. So, and then just, I'll agree with everyone else, I thought Mr. Johansson's points really, 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 don't want to hire another standard, one-of-the-mill broadband consultant that comes in and gives us, you know, a photocopied plan where you just cross off Woodland and insert West Sacramento and the recommendations at the end are not helpful. We really, we need to, we need to be going at it hard, so.
I'm confident that, Mr. Hamilton will make sure that happens.
Mr. Kristof?
I did have a question on the rail relocation project.
Mm-hmm.
You have $100,000 that is allocated. Now, Davis, Woodland.
It's the next town.
And West Sacramento are the jurisdictions that are a. the jurisdictions that are affected. Is that $100,000 for West Sacramento project? Or are Davis and Woodland also included in that?
We're, we are coming up on that item next.
Is he in the CIP?
It's in the CIP item, which is-
That's why you had me confused.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we haven't quite finished 13.
Okay, now I'm finished 13.
All right.
I guess one of the-
Aaron will be ready to answer that as soon as he gets the-
I see, I saw him start to move.
Got time to get ready now.
I guess when you bring back that report on a quarter cent, for me, it's going to be important that we identify what we are going to spend on the various programs that that money is going to fund. So we can have that discussion.
And of course, that's council's program.
That's right.
You will tell us. I'll tell you how much money we're going to get.
Okay.
And as Rankin will tell you, the process to go through, we've, we've actually, as I'm sure you're not surprised, after Thursday, after the city, we began doing our preliminary work and anticipate this being discussed.
Okay. Another, other discussion on this item?
Just direction. So we got some clear direction.
You have sufficient and clear direction on this item?
Yep, we have clear direction.
If I could, just jump in this water on the sales tax. Do you want simply background paper in terms of how it would compare a quarter cent with the other cities? Or do you want us to take a stab along the lines of the long-term funding needs that could be addressed with a quarter cent sales tax?
I mean, if you want to take a stab, I, I mean, we, I mean, having some, I think the farthest we could get in the timeframe of the, of a sales tax measure for the ballot would be the contours of, as opposed to here's a, here's a penny-by-penny budget. Because we don't even, you know, several of these things, we don't, we don't know yet. We don't, we don't know what the, what the exact need is or what the balancing is.
Right.
But the contours, like, here's the envelope that it would need to fit in. And the other reason for that is, you know, if we, if we, if we like to pursue a general purpose measure, then we don't want to have a-
Absolutely.
We don't want to have adopted a, here is an expenditure plan and budget for the, for the dollars if, if it's a general purpose measure.
If we're sensing this right, we're, we would be aiming at a general 50% majority measure.
That would be my personal preference. And that's been our practice in the past.
And, and, and could staff take the extra step in terms of naming such as expenditures that we've identified that need long-term needs?
Yeah. And, and, I mean, it's obviously because I laid out a framework on, on Thursday night. It was not completely, it was not completely willy-nilly. Let's, here's a bunch of things and then here's a separate revenue. So I, you know, for the purpose of seeing, is it possible to accomplish this set of objectives that flows out of the council's strategic plan? Yes, it is within that envelope. But without it being an allocation plan or budget.
We wouldn't get to that.
So I'll share that with, so that it can be, I'll share that with staff. So it can be shared with council in the appropriate form.
Okay. What is, if I may, Mr. Mayor, what's the general timeline that we have to get to a vote?
Madam Clerk?
Do we get the-
July 20, am I right?
The county would like us to take our final action no later than July 20. And we can do that well in advance of it by bringing it back to you on June 1 and then again on June 15.
Okay. All right. Then with that, we would, I think we have direction for even a draft ordinance.
Yeah, we can always put it off. But we can't, if you don't give us the option, then we can't, we can't accelerate. So-
Very good.
I think we've got it. So-
We'll be ready on June 1st.
Okay, great. Thank you. Item 14, then, is presentation and discussion of proposed midterm adjustments to the city's adopted by annual capital improvement program budget ending June 30, 2017, with particular attention to the Olo Rail Relocation Project.
We won't go right to that. So I want to thank, again, all the department heads, but particularly Natish. This is something he works extremely hard on. He spends a huge amount of time. And he created this wonderful first slide that he brought to me. And I thought, this is really fantastic. Because it's, you know, picture says a thousand words. So you look at that picture, and what it says is that we do a really good job of leveraging grants. 44% of our money that we spend on capital projects comes from grants. And you can see the other percentages there. 19% from our various measures, utility, 15% impact fees, eight assessments. So we're, we're doing, I think, a remarkably good job leveraging it. And you're going to see in the report tonight that we are continuing with those same recommendations.
Can I ask you why you have that up? Because it is quite eye-opening. Is it, so the, in terms of our general taxes, property tax, sales tax, and other general taxes, are they not, are they in the 2% other revenues? Or are they not contributing, are we not spending any of, are we spending zero of, like, general tax dollars on capital improvement projects?
We are spending some of it in, for example, general facilities fund, $400,000 or so. Whatever is the excess carryover from general fund is transferred to our CIP. But last few years, last five years, we used all our general fund money. So we don't do any transfer. This was basically savings from before that, when we were economic boom, that we saved the money. So.
So all of the, the major capital projects that people see in the city and the ones that they don't see under the ground are almost entirely being funded not by, not by their regular taxes?
Correct.
That's right.
And that's important. When I'm in negotiations, oftentimes, that's what will happen, is a union will look and say, look at these things you're building and how much, you know, the money you're spending. And, you know, we, you know, give us more raises. That's not general fund money. You know, that's, we're leveraging a grant. And we've got, you know, some impact fees. And we've got, you know, if it's a water sewer, we've got some utility fees. And we're using that and a grant. And that's how we're doing the project. But anyway, I thought this was, I really appreciated Natish coming up. I thought it was a good creative chart. And it does send, I think, a message of our sort of method of operation here in the city, is we work very hard in delivering our projects so that we can continue to get the grants. So looking at what we're asking for, for the midterm budget, first going to the Fund 106 and Fund 10406. So just so the council's aware, this is an accounting that you probably don't need to worry about. But 10406 is our capital portion of our 106 money. So we put it in a separate fund to make sure that we're using it for capital. And that's where the vast majority of the money is spent on. So $150,000 for a Washington parking lot. It's actually just, that money's being transferred to our parking fund in order to do it. So you'll see that same money in another place. You can see the rail relocation, which I'll let Aaron explain to Councilman Kristoff what that $100,000 is for. And a little bit of streetcar money, $85,000 for, which we're leveraging 350. You got Sycamore Trail. We had 150. We're leveraging 1.15 million. Street, I Street Conversion, $13,000, leveraging 225,000. Grand Gateway, 1.5 million, leveraging 4.2 million. Broadband master plan, we talked about the $100,000 earlier. And then the courtyard site plan design, 800,000. We're not leveraging anything there. That's our money. But we will get that money back when we sell the courtyard property that we have in the Southport Industrial Park. I did the figures for the city manager. He asked me today. He said, how much money are we spending for what we're leveraging? We're spending $3 million. When you go through this, if you add it up, it's $3 million. And we're getting $6 million in, in-
Grant.
In grant money for that, for that money. So it's, it's, you know, more than double what we're spending. So that's fantastic.
Just a quick question.
Yes, absolutely.
When you do sell the corporation yard, the money will go back into this, this fund?
Well, when they send the corporation, they have to pay the general fund back-
For that loan.
For the loan that we gave them to buy the courtyard in the first place.
Okay.
Aaron, Aaron doesn't like this. I make him pay me back. And then I give him the money back. Because he'll need it for, well, obviously, it comes to the council to make the decision. But we'll need that money to, for the next courtyard. Measure K, we just, again, Measure K, very important. We have 800,000 in unspent, uncommitted Measure K money for capital projects that we haven't, we haven't spent. And so we're recommending, we spent about $360,000 for this Rohe Brehad project that's right, going to be right out here, West Cap and Jefferson that we're going to be doing. We have some general facility fee. This is an area that we are going to have to pay attention to because, as Natish said, we used to have excess general fund money and it would always flow into the general facilities fund. And so that's how we sort of built it up. We haven't had any excess for a number of years. And so we're getting down to spending the last general facilities fee money. So we're going to have to address this issue. And staff is looking into things. We really are, these are, these are very minimal requests. But we've got some, we got a park in the stone. We've got a safety issue that we need to make some adjustments there. Station 41 has some problems with its ramps that need to be fixed. We've got some boathouse repairs. We, our Galleria, which is a fantastic place for events, we use it a lot. And it's getting a little beat up. And we need to do some work to fix some of the, that up. And the barge canal parking. So that's the request from the general facilities fund. Parking fund, that's the 150 I talked about early, that Measure, that Measure G 106 is giving to the parking fund for the Washington parking lot right by the new restaurant that's going to be there and some of the ADA accessible sidewalk next door to it. And then we're asking for $150,000 for some parking meters to start our parking program. This flooding, Lou, just make sure you understand, this is money we have to spend that we will get back. It's not, we just have to front the money and then we'll get the grant back. That's the same for the next one, which is the National Endowment. It's 200,000 grant. But we have to front it. And then we get the money back after the project's done. We have the riverfront extension of the, of the bridge. That's, which is 1.2 million, leveraging $2 million there. Then we have the Casey Grand Roadways. I looked at it this afternoon and I don't remember what it is. Natish, help me.
We can come back to this.
Okay. It's, it's, it's a road project. And I'm forgetting. I apologize exactly which one it is. So somebody can help me in the back. Next.
Katie can help with this one.
Katie, can you help me with this one? The Casey Grand Roadways?
Oh, Aaron.
Aaron, there you go, Aaron. I'm sorry. I looked at it this afternoon and then I just blanked on this one.
This is just, this is the project. It's the next phase of Bridgesick Infrastructure connecting Grand Street through Delta Lane and over to Fifth Street. So it's, it's a project we're trying to tee up for the next round of cap and trade money or CCOG, Community Design Grants, again, on that theme of leveraging grant funds. So it's design work for that project.
Thank you.
That's why a team is better than an individual. Thank you. Thank you, Aaron. Next. Sewer, this is a sewer project. We're, you know, the project we just talked about, the West Cap and Jefferson Street, we decided we weren't going to redo the streets and then go back two years later and tear out the street that we just built, put in a sewer. So we got some sewer work that we're going to do at the same time to be efficient. And then we have a couple of water improvements, Mike McGowan Bridge and a water lane on West, oh, that's the one that's in West Cap.
Yeah, sewer is for the sea stretch.
Sewer is for, is for the bridge.
Yes, sea stretch.
Sewer is for the I Street Bridge. I apologize. So we have to do some fixes to the sewer line over where the new I Street Bridge is going to be. The replacement water line at West Cap is the one I was talking about. So one of the things the council asked last time, I thought was very appropriate, is, you know, these are the ones we're recommending. What projects didn't make the list? What things did we look at and consider so that you can decide whether we, how we did and whether there's items that you'd rather see moved up. So these are the items that we, as staff, are recommending that we either don't have staff time or money to do, or they're not the highest priority items. So there's a major road project over Harbor and Industrial. We are doing GIS. I don't think we're not doing it. We're spending $167,000 a year working on stuff with the water master plan and the sewer master plan. This is what it would cost to get it done in the next year. And the decision was that that was not the highest priority. Broadway Bridge Final Design, really just not ready at this point for that. The other projects, you can see they're 20 and 40 and $50,000 projects. Certainly, if any of those, the council thinks need to be put in the current CIP, we, we could look at what projects they would jump ahead of. But this was our prioritization. But obviously, this is the council workshop and the council's CIP that you get to direct us. So with that, that's my CIP report.
On the jumping up piece, the, they need to jump within funds, right?
Yes, correct.
So they're, several of these, because the ones I have, I would be the most interested in moving up are all in the parks space. And there's no money in the parks fund after the completion of the existing, the current projects, right?
That's, that's correct.
So that, so they might be more important to me than some of the other pieces. But they're, but they're, the fund source isn't, isn't really available. So.
And if there was, you know, if the sales tax was appropriate for that, then that might be, they could, they could move up, obviously. These are projects that could move up if we have additional funds. We don't have additional funds at right now.
Okay. Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, thanks, Phil. On the item of the parking meters, 14029, a lot of cities in the county are going to systems like Park Mobile, where basically it's just a mark station. You go on an app and you, you buy it. You don't need, you don't buy meters. So the advantage of something like that, obviously, you don't have meters. But also it would allow data collection to be able to see who's parking, when the spaces are open. You know, so you don't have to go to the expense of having a smart parking meter there. So has there been any consideration of alternance and alternatives to standard meters?
There we are. Katie can address that issue?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. We, that is, we're asking that the funding be programmed. And then we're in the middle of analyzing what will be purchased with it. So we'll be coming back to you with that detail.
All right. Great. Thanks. Thought that was the answer. Better to have the experts.
I was going to ask the same question. So to, just to put an explanation point, I'll be honest with you, Mr. Johansson suggested. So, I mean, the, the Washington District, because of where it is and the existing, the incumbent neighborhood that is there as well, but does pose some, it poses more challenges for particularly smartphone-based solution. Less of a problem for text-based solutions. I mean, there are other approaches as well. So, but I would, I hope we'll get, I've been at too many venues where Mr. Johansson has come up with an idea like this. And he's told, we're working on it and we'll get back to you when we're done with the scope. And the scope is back and it clearly only had 1% consideration. So I just want to really flag this one is, you know, let's pay some attention to this. Because we don't have a, we have the great advantage of not having an incumbent base of, of a ton of parking meters. So we don't have to, we don't have to necessarily dive into the 20th century solution when that, that sector is changing so dramatically right now. So.
Clearly, the whole parking solution is going to come back to council. No question about it. We're, we have a team working on it. And it will come back before we make any commitments. This is just putting the money in the budget to spend on whatever the appropriate thing to spend it is on, which you will tell us.
Mayor Protem Sandin?
Thank you, Mayor. And thanks for the presentation. It, it was good for me to hear that the, seeking a solution for the general facilities fee fund for growth, we need to, we need to do that. Because as I was looking at, I was taking the hole in. I didn't have the benefit of having the beautiful chart. But I was, I was thinking to myself, gosh, we have all these new, wonderful projects and we're able to go forward. And they're substantial. And then I was thinking 20 years from now, when we had to take care of them. And we have issues like the road deterioration, or we need to paint something, or we need to, some, some of the things on the, kind of the smaller list at the end, I thought, gosh, it's $20,000, $15,000. But you have a whole pile of those. And that's, that's too much, that's more than, than we have. So I think, because I spent 30 years of my life at the University of California, and we would get projects built. And then we didn't have funds to renovate. And we'd have a, some mandate come in that we had to make everything earth, kind of a earthquake safe. And, but there were no funds for it. So it's just, to me, it just hit me that it's similar here, that we have, while we're building, we have to think about, gosh, how are we going to take care of this in the future? So I was really happy to hear, at least in that, in that one fee fund, the general, the general facilities fee fund, that we're, we need to take a look at that. But I think it's everywhere.
It is in all our fee studies. So the council's aware. And I know Natish is helping with the Public Works Department on the various fee studies. We're making sure that in all of those fee studies, those are going to be part of the fee study. So you will see not just what it costs us to provide those services, but, you know, reasonably projected replacement and repair. And we need to build it in. Obviously, a council direction. But it needs to be part of the fee study. So we at least know what it truly costs us, you know, to have a water treatment plant, to have, put pipes in the ground, to build a street. Because it's not just building the street.
The courtyard, so the, so the, which, project we've all, we've all been supporting in a variety of ways. So my only question is the fund source. This is one of, is 406 or 106? So, and this kind of relates back to the Measure K question, but this time Measure G. So Measure G, when we put that on the ballot, was for the purpose of community investments that would, you know, contribute to the, to the community, community amenities, but also to leverage community, the community's, you know, economic growth and prosperity and the rest of our tax base over time. And so I'm just, I'm curious what the thinking behind the courtyard, which is, I mean, as a lever of economic development, as opposed to a core city function that we, prior to Measure G, we should have been doing, we have to have a courtyard anyway. Where we have, we have the vehicles and whatever. What's the economic development impact of the courtyard project with respect to the Measure G frame?
I guess, and Aaron can help me if he disagrees. I think it's because we have a courtyard currently that's right on the waterfront, which we want to develop and that we need to move off it. And I think that's really the connection. You could, Aaron, will I add?
The only thing I'd add there is, we haven't formalized this yet. But the thought is, it's the reason that Phil said- it's the reason that Phil said, first of all, it's moving a facility that is currently on prime riverfront property that has a huge economic development potential down the road. But the use of the Measure G funding, it's actually out of the pool of money the council set aside for Pioneer Bluff deindustrialization and planning. So in that vein, it's deindustrialization, but we were, we were sort of planning ahead here that the money that we're spending out of Fund 106 on, you know, corp yard design and any other costs, because we're anticipating getting revenue back from the sale of the property, we have the option to essentially book that money as a loan from 106 until that, that revenue comes in from the General Facilities Fund, so it could reimburse Fund 106. It's not articulated here that way, but we could certainly set it up that way. We've done that before with the, certainly, traffic impact fees, Village Parkway, for example, so.
And Mike McGowan.
If that's your direction, we could, we could certainly do that.
But I thought earlier you had said that you were planning using those, the revenue from the sale to actually build the corp yard.
Design and build, and we're still working on a financing plan for the rest of the building, so it wouldn't be sufficient on it.
And we have talked about that, actually, it goes to Councilman Ledesma. We have talked about just doing this as a loan, repaying the 106 when we're done with the corp yard, assuming we can turn a, you know, profit on the sale of the property and the building. And, you know, we're working very hard on a financing plan for how we're going to pay for the corp yard building. And so there's still, this is, I guess I would articulate this, if I'm hearing what the direction of the council, we would, I would book this then as a loan at this point from 106 and then pending the property and the financing of the corp yard, we would come back to you if we actually needed to use 106 money and couldn't repay the loan. That would be fine.
I'm just flagging it because the father of Measure G is here, so he can say, he can give, he can give the full perspective. I'm just flagging it for the same purpose, I just don't want, I don't want us to start to see Fund 106 as a, as a way to fund the core of the city's non-economic development-related function. So we would, you know, we might, we might use Fund 106 for the purpose of clearing part of the waterfront for, for high, you know, for high-value development activities, but we might, but we are approached that then from, okay, treat the city as though it weren't us. The corp yard owner is not, what's the value for economic development purposes for us accomplishing that? So if you came back and said, "We want to use 106 to build, to build the entire corp yard for this part," no, no, okay, that's too much, right? Now you're just using 106 to supplant what should be core city function. But, so this purpose, to me, does make some sense, but, but it's just, you know, we're early enough in the game where it's still important to make sure we're, that we have some fidelity to the rules, to the rules of the game around Measure G, but I'll defer to.
I can tell you that Aaron holds a hammer over anyone's head who tries to use 106 money for anything that's not economic development, community investment.
And it just had to be articulated where that, where the usage was, because I appreciate the mayor's comments, but it is the reason why I asked what happens when it sells? Because if we're taking money out for some other, if another fund or some other use came out, came of it, and not a city purpose or an economic development purpose to generate something else, then it's not living up to that, the spirit of what we're looking for. So, again, I understand where we're going. It certainly helps understand as part of the Pioneer Bluff, which I kind of thought you were going with that. But, but again, it's just, we just really need to be careful in how you articulate it. You know, how you, how you account for it on your end is, again, I'm not as, I won't say I'm not as interested in it. If you can, if it makes us all feel better that you account for it as a loan to make sure Fund 106 sees some benefit back so we can reinvest that again, maybe into some other purpose, so be it, that's even better. It helps justify us seeding that project even more, so, much like we did to a degree in redevelopment, right? So you can seed projects, you refund it in, you can leverage it, keep, leverage it again.
We'll take a look at this between now and June 1, make sure that we.
Do we get the relocation answer yet?
No, you're here.
Mr. Laurel?
Answer the rail.
Okay, so, so yes, the 100,000 that we're recommending from the city's portion, the first phase study is done. We learned a lot from it, but we don't know a lot about our portions of the project. So the thought here is that we allocate money from the city. We're also putting our, putting my port hat on, we did a presentation to the Port Commission on this, that the port and city could be a partner in the next phase of that work. But to get to your question, it would be specifically for the West Sacramento portions of that project. Now, there may be an opportunity to leverage the regional effort to get additional, say, more EDA money, more federal money, to do more of the work, but we're going to be sure that the money that we're investing in, this, this planning is going to the portions of the project that are West Sacramento.
Okay, thank you.
Phil, on Orange Canal Parking Lot, is that the gravel parking lot that is on the west side of Jefferson?
No, this is the one right by the firehouse.
No.
Yeah, right by the firehouse. And it's also the, correct?
Firehouse?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, you're talking about the one that's by the, I'm sorry, you're talking about the one by the canal.
Yeah.
Yes, that, yeah, that's the one, it's the gravel.
Yeah, that's, that's the one, okay.
Yes, that's the one. Sorry, got my parking lots confused there.
Through.
Yep.
Looking firehouse, wait a minute.
Yeah, you're thinking what gravel by the firehouse.
Other questions or discussion? No. All right. I also really appreciated that this format was very helpful in both the main, the bulk of the document and then in the appendix, as appendices to, I mean, it's the same information in some ways that we've been receiving for decades, but very clear and very, very relevant to what we have to do in terms of sorting out what are the right priorities, so kudos to the whole, to Natacha's whole team on this.
Yeah, we've been working really hard, the presentations, to get it better, each year, that's our, that's our theme in our department, better each year. Thank you.
All right. That brings us then to item 15, which is a presentation on the draft adequate progress report and an update of the city's findings of adequate progress towards achieving an urban level of flood protection.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'll begin the presentation tonight and then my colleague, Mr. Fabin, will close it for you tonight. Back in 2007, when SB 5 and the related legislation was passed that imposed several new requirements related to flood protection, one of the biggest ones was something the council undertook around this time last year, which was several policy amendments to our general plan. And now, beginning this year, the city needs to begin making certain findings related to getting to an urban level of flood protection, which is under a 200-year, which is also has been our own general plan policy since back in 2008. The findings must be made in order to approve essentially almost any projects in any flood hazard areas. And although a very small portion of the city is in a flood hazard areas but defined by FEMA, a large portion of the city is in the 200-year flood protection realm that DWR maintains for us. We are confident that the necessary findings can be made this year, given the progress that the city and Wesafka have been making toward, or adequate toward, getting to our 200-year goal. And then, so this, this year will be the first time we need to make that finding and then we'll need to submit annual reports to the Central Valley Flood Protection Board regarding our progress toward achieving that ultimate goal. We're already looking, looking forward to that in the going, in the coming years as our flood protection goals evolve and we construct projects and try to get to our objectives. As this, you know, the finding and reports may change as time goes by and conditions change out there. So at this time, like Mr. Fabin could actually describe some of the actual progress we're making out there in the, in the real world right now.
Thank you, Dave. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. As you're well aware, when it comes to flood risk reduction, the city and the West Sacramento Flood Control Agency have been very proactive over the years and especially over the last decade, you know, following the lessons learned from Hurricane Katrina. And the city in Wesafka has been advancing a very comprehensive program for flood risk reduction that's been titled the West Sacramento Levy Improvement Program, which really has four main objectives. The first was partnering with the state and the Army Corps of Engineers on the reevaluation of the West Sacramento Levy System. The second was implementation of critical project sites early, in advance of that federal reevaluation of the levy system. The third is our public education and outreach. We have a very robust program to keep our public informed and we prepare emergency preparedness activities annually, at least annually, and then developing the local funding to support all of those efforts. Now, for the general evaluation, the progress we've made thus far has been, especially this year, has been tremendous with the culmination of the completion of that general evaluation report back in April. And as we speak, we have our project on the Senate version of the Water Resource Development Act bill, and hearing was held earlier this week that teed up our project to be included in the House version of the bill. So we anticipate that we have our project on both of those bills moving forward for combined WADA later this year. From the early implementation projects, as you know, we've completed three projects to date, Ice Street Rivers and CHP, and we're embarking on our fourth and largest early implementation project, the Southport Levy Project. Phase one, which is the relocation of South River Road to the Village Parkway alignment is wrapping up. We anticipate completing that work by the end of the month and holding the, save the date, holding the grand opening for that segment of the Parkway on June 17. So you should be receiving something shortly about that, that grand opening event. The phase two portion of the Southport project, actual levy construction, we anticipate going out to bid this summer and starting construction, construction later this year. It's a two- to three-year project. It's quite extensive and very, it's pretty state-of-the-art as well with the setback levy and the establishment of additional floodplain. So that's moving right along as well. About the Southport levy portion of the project phase two, staff plans to bring an item back to the council on June 15 to provide a more detailed update on the features of that project, what it's intended to provide for flood protection, as well as the post-project amenities and features that it provides. So draft adequate progress report has been prepared and is attached to the staff report. The report details and confirms the adequate progress being made by the city in Wesafka towards achieving the 200-year level of protection. The report confirms the total project scope, cost, and estimate and schedule that has been developed to achieve a 200-year level of flood protection. This was confirmed through the update, the recent update of the problem identification report and the alternatives analysis report recently performed by Wood Rogers. The updates were necessary due primarily to the state's adoption of urban levy design criteria, which was not in place when the original problem identification report and alternatives were developed, and to a lesser extent is to further define the scope and cost as described by the federal project that's being recommended with the GRR. The report also confirms that sufficient revenues have been identified as described in the finance plan, which is also attached to the staff report in the form of the cash flow model. And the report also confirms that critical features under construction are being implemented. To date, the completed early implementation projects, Wesafka and the state have spent $36 million in the completion of those projects, and once the Southport project is complete, we, in partnership with the state, will have invested over $240 million in early implementation projects. That is no small feat for a community of our size. The report also recognizes the future federal project that's being recommended for authorization in WADA 2016. So the draft adequate progress report was prepared by Wesafka on behalf of the city and upon subsequent affirmation by the council at a council meeting in June. The report will be submitted to DWR and the Central Valley Flood Protection Board by July 1 as required. And as Dave mentioned, annually, annual reports thereafter will also have to be submitted. And that report obviously details the progress being made towards 200-year level of protection. So in summary, the updated problem identification report and alternatives analysis report provide the required substantial evidence that's needed to support the city in making a finding of adequate progress. Adequate revenues have been identified that are necessary to fund each year of the project and the critical features are under construction, along with the federal project soon to be authorized that will complete the construction of the remaining levies in our, in our system. So next steps with council direction provided tonight, staff plans to return in June with recommendation to adopt the final report and to make the actual finding by resolution of adequate progress. And with that, be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Mr. Kristoff? No, I would just say that, you know, there has been adequate progress made. We are moving along fairly well. The GRR is done, chief support's done, and it looks like, from your report tonight, the WADA bills are all, at least they're, they're tagged and everything seems to be ready, ready to go, so that we can get reimbursed for some of the funds that we have and give them additional federal dollars. So, I mean, I think we're making very, very good progress. I guess, one of the things that happen in this whole process is everything seems to get slowed down. It gets a slowdown by the core, there's always another issue that seems to pop up and, but at the same time, you know, staff has kept their nose to the grindstone, so to speak, and, and they're going to cross the finish line. And, and so that is, that's the important thing. And also, if we do get all of this work done, then FEMA will look upon us as, as a zone that does not prohibit future development and, and really stop us from developing like has happened in some other jurisdictions. We're trying to move forward as fast as we possibly can, and I think we have done, as the report asks for, an adequate job of preparing the city to move to the next level so that, number one, we stay away from FEMA issues, and number two, we do our major function, which is the protection of 50,000 people here in West Sacramento. So I'm, I'm very happy with way things are moving and progressing. I'm happy with the work that staff has done. There are always some contentious issues that seem to arise as we, as we meet, and we have another meeting tomorrow morning, so, but I'm pretty happy with the way things are going.
Mr. Johansson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I don't really have any specific comments about the report, I think it's good. But the comment I do have is, so it's been a decade or more since we've been looking, working on this, and thanks to council member Kristoff's participation, Wesafka and the staff, we haven't really seen any slippage, at least the work that we're doing. And we've had staff transition, we were, I know we were worried about that a number of occasions when we've had, you know, what's going to be the transition from new staff into this project, but it seemed, at least from my perspective, it looks pretty seamless. Everybody, I think all staff did a great job in getting this together, making sure the ball didn't go backwards but was continually moved forward, particularly when we're dealing with state and federal agencies. So I commend you all for, for the work on this.
Mr. Ledesma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I too want to thank staff and Councilman Kristoff for the leadership in this, and I think the objective that I, we have to support the finding you're making, correct?
Could you repeat the question?
We have to support, make a finding that we're making adequate, adequate progress, right? That's the item is asking.
Well, tonight is a presentation of the draft report. It will return in June with an actual request to make the finding by resolution.
Okay, so we're just giving you some, okay, thank you. And I think, it's just funny to me that we're, we're saying that we're happy, you look at what we're trying to accomplish here, I'm pretty ecstatic at the progress we've made over the last, however many years. It's remarkable progress. And when I first started getting into this, even at the planning commission level and they came on council, and understanding all the nuances and, and the Herculean effort both in Washington to get things moving and keep things moving there, to here, moving our own projects as we go, move forward, and I know the mayor says it all the time, but a city, when we started this, wasn't quite 50,000 people, now we are, and we're able to move this, this forward is just remarkable. So, you know, it is a testament to, first of all, our core principle and what's all always the first priority, which is keeping this top of mind, is our priority, keep focused on it. And I think that's it. But, but again, it's just the tenacity of the city and the belief that's of our residents to support it. And this isn't, I know this hasn't been a terribly happy feeling for residents who are feeling the, the part of this. I think I'm, I'm sensitive towards that, that, that there has been sacrifices by folks who are in that area, but overall, it's been a tremendous progress we made. And when you step back from it, and you see that we're just weeks away from WADA bill being out, and it's just, it's just going to be, you know, something that we can look, look proudly, we already do, at least I do. So I appreciate the, the, the summary that this provides, because you can see how expansive the project has been. From everything you just listed, and you forget about even the education we did at one time around flood insurance and making sure people understood that. We just really knocked it out of the park on this one, so happy to, happy to see that it's summarized here, and thank everyone for their efforts.
President Sandin?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I think I'll riff off of Councilmember Ledesma's comments. I think we're tripping over the nomenclature because it's called an adequate progress report, and we want to call it a tremendously amazing progress report. So I too want to thank, thank folks for the work on this. And of course, I think we want to see the, the perfect adequate progress report go forward so that every i is dotted and every t is crossed, so that we, we put our, we have the best report possible and we can keep things moving forward. And I want to thank the team for the tremendous work.
I completely, if these things weren't structured this way, this, to me, this is like a drop-the-mic progress report, and in terms of what has been accomplished, it really is extraordinary. And watching, watching, just compared to other places in the region, but also just, there's, there are hundreds of places around the country that are still where we were in 2009, just like, well, what are we going to do? How are we going to figure this thing out? And some larger places, you know, cities 10 times our size that have not, that are, where the slippage has been so dramatic that they're nowhere near this, this far along. So I, I concur. I think the progress has been really tremendous, and it's one, it's the most important thing that hardly anyone will ever know that we did. And if we're doing, and if we're doing, as we're doing our job right, people are not, they're not going to Rayleigh's or Dartmouth Agas or the Nuggets, you know, and if they see you, they're not, they're not worried that the, this project is not moving forward. And it's a, you know, what is it, billion-dollar project that the GRR recommends? It's so, it's a, it's a, for, still for a city of 55,000 people, it's just, it's utterly extraordinary. So I certainly concur. For the actual finding, the, in attachment two, there is a cash flow model that kind of schedules out how we're going to be deploying resources, local resources between now and 2025, because, because the finding is we're making adequate progress with an expectation that we will have, we will be there by 2025. And so the, the adequate progress part, I think, is, is pretty clearly demonstrate, it's very clearly demonstrated. The, and we will be there by 2025, I, I feel like as you, as you take a look at this again, could be, could be clearer. Like what, what, in, in an ideal world, which so far has mostly turned out to be the case, you know, what would we, what, in addition to us, what would the feds be deploying? I guess that's the missing piece here. Like what, or maybe I'm not, just not seeing it, but this, it looks like this is only local revenues, because it's not, the dollar figures are not that large in this table?
Yeah, there's another in the actual adequate progress report, and then the final report that you'll get, in the finance plan, there's an accompanying table to this that shows the various shares of the entire 200-year project, state share, local share, and federal share. But the reason this was included is because it's demonstrating that we have the city house and West Africa, the local funds for the match. But there is an accompanying table that shows the state, federal, and local share.
But does that, does that table show it scheduled out over time? I mean, is there, is there enough time between now and 25, 2025? I mean, the question we have to ask, we need to, is there, are we actually going to complete it by 2025? Or is the way that the federal process works means it's probably going to be 2028 or something? So...
So I will answer that by saying that the program that the corps put out with the GRR, in terms of the dollars they expect to, to allocate every year towards implementation of the federal project, is in line with our assumptions for the completion of this project by 2025.
Okay.
And so one of the key factors for this evaluation was the update to the program cost and schedule, because the federal estimate, the very high 30,000-foot level estimate was so large. And at 1.2 billion, that's a very difficult lift to get there by 2025. So we need to bring that back to more realistic dollars based on our experience with the project that we've implemented in and what we're seeing for the estimates for the Southport project.
Okay.
So we are in line, our assumptions are in line with what the corps' assumptions are for the, for their, for their contribution to the federal project on an annual basis.
Okay. I mean, for our own purposes, we, we should, since this is a key checkpoint for us also, in addition to being our requirement to report to whoever looks at this report, it is also an important way station for us. So if, if we are looking at that and thinking, okay, we may not be a 200, we may not be a 200, or here's our, we, here's our vulnerable points for getting to 200-year by 2025, we might get it by 2020. The earlier, like right now, if we know that, we can start, you know, we can start laying the foundation for either state policy changes or for other, other responses. So it doesn't necessarily need to be in the report that's released pursuant to SB 5, but to the council and to the, you know, and to West Africa, having, having clarity around that timeframe and what, where the critical pathfinding realities might be that might prevent us from meeting it, and then what would our, what would our contingency plan be? Because there's, it's not, from SB, SB 5 doesn't give you a whole lot of options if you don't make it by 2025. We only get to make the adequate progress finding once, right? So, so it's, we're not in an emergency situation, but this is our moment to sort of make sure that we're, the council is, is on track for, for making sure we don't, we're not, we're not creating a train wreck in 2025. So. Mr. Kristoff?
Just one more comment, and that is, is I would certainly like to, I'd like to thank staff for getting us to where we are today. I think you guys have done a very, very good job. Also like to thank the council, because I know each and every council person here is, when they've talked to Doris, or when they've talked to other politicians back in Washington, DC, or they've talked to, to Washington, DC staff, flood protection for West Sacramento has always been an issue. And I'd just like to thank all the, all the council for all that they do by just bringing it up and keeping the awareness there, because I can tell you, when I've gone back there, they know West Sacramento. They just, you mentioned West Sacramento, and for a little city of 50,000 people or so, we're really highly thought of and we're on their radar screen. And that, I think, really helps. So, just...
All right. Sufficient, sufficient feedback for this item? Great, thank you very much, great job. Right there, praising Mr. Council calendar.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Here are a few dates that might be of interest to you coming up. This week is National Public Works Week, and in honor of National Public Works Week, we have...
He's not even here, you can move on. It's a barbecue.
It's Denix's moment to shine, he's not even here. Well, there's a barbecue he's throwing tomorrow, so you can see him there. It starts at 11:30, and it's at the water treatment plant. And coming up on the 28th, it's a Saturday, is the grand opening of the new play structure at Bridgeway Lakes Park. That starts at 11:00 AM. And then a few things coming up in June, which aren't on the calendar yet, but we'll be adding them shortly. June 3, the Pulse Point program rollout is happening at Station 45 at 10:00 AM. And June 17 is going to be the Village Parkway grand opening at 10:00 AM. The location to be determined.
Probably at Village Parkway?
Yes, but what portion of it, we're not sure yet, so we will let you know.
All right. Any questions on the calendar? City manager report?
Just briefly, as you know, the state is in the annual process of developing the state budget that may revise, includes several augmentations to transportation, particularly a trade corridor program, housing, early learning, but particularly road maintenance. So staff is monitoring these and position ourselves, if the budget is enacted, to be able to go after that and build upon that 44% of the projects being funded by grant programs. So particularly on trade corridor, that's a pretty substantial amount of money, given the fact that we host a port, we might be able to position ourselves for that pretty quickly. Amanda mentioned several events. I just also wanted to say that this afternoon, we approved a special event permit with off-the-grid that operates several successful food truck, entertainment venues throughout the Bay Area, including at Presidio. They will be at the River Walk, beginning, in front of the Ziggurat, beginning January, or June 12. It's a Sunday from 11 to 4 through October 30. That'll be an event that they anticipate somewhere between 2,000 and 2,500 folks on the waterfront every Sunday. It's been a great effort with parks. Police Department's been active in that, knowing that we have a long-term marriage with these folks. We do have an out provision if there was some issue, but we're really excited to bring that on. You'll get additional information as we, as June 12 occurs. Also, the Amgen tour will go through the Bridge District, down South River Road, over the McGowan Bridge, and then back on the River Road, and that is this Sunday. And then also, I want to say that the farmer's market starts tomorrow at 4 o'clock.
Right, any questions? City manager reports? City attorney reports? Staff direction for members of the council? We have no future agenda requests? Looks like Mr. Ledesma is moving, and Mr. and Mayor protest standing in seconds that the meeting be adjourned. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, turning down, motion carries, meeting is adjourned.